Good afternoon, guys.
Morning.
Welcome to, yeah, good morning. That throws me off guard more than anyone, I'm sure. Welcome to Public Facilities Meeting, Monday, May 19th, 2025. I would like to call this meeting to order, and if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are good to go with the Statement of Compliance of FOIA. We're good to go on that, Sarah?
Yes.
Perfect, and we also do have a quorum. First, I'd like to let y'all know ahead of time, my voice obviously sounds fantastic. So David's gonna help me out with reading some of these today, so we can make it all the way through this and finance as well. I would imagine we'll have some other county council members coming in and out as a time, since our time is a little bit different, so if you guys could bear with us on that, that would be greatly appreciated. With that said, we'll move on to number four, the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
Set it moved.
Thank you. In a second, please.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Tabernick. Do we have any discussion?
No.
Any objection with the approval? And I see no objection. This will be moved on with no objection. Going on to number five, approval of the minutes from April 21st, 2025. Can I have that motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. In a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Any updates? Tab read every word. We got everything?
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Yes.
All right, this will also be approved with no objection. All right, public comment. I know we did not have any signups. Is there anybody that did, wanted to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? Speak now, forever hold your peace. All right, we will also move on and close the citizens' comment period. Going on to number seven, the Assistant County Administrator Report.
Morning to everyone. I'm gonna invite Robert Getze to come up. He's gonna give a quick update on our capital projects.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, good morning. Hope y'all had a good weekend. Just a few updates real quick. The, for capital projects, the administrative suite, council chamber renovation is moving along nicely. Construction's underway, and for the most part, the interior renovations are proceeding as plans. There are some things we'll be bringing up to you guys for potential change orders here in the next little bit, but it is moving along nicely. Southside pickleball, we celebrated the grand opening of the Southside pickleball and basketball courts last week, and, I'm sorry, on May 9th, actually. And that went nicely, had a nice, nice group of people there, and every day we drive by, I'll tell you what, it is absolutely packed. It's a nice thing to see. The Public Works Administration Building is moving along. We are actually meeting with LS3P later this week to meet with Fleet and Public Works to discuss the plans moving forward and how we are going to proceed with construction, as far as our plan to move forward with design and construction. Sun City Station 39, we received HOA approval from Sun City on the exterior design, and that's moving along nicely as well. And we finalized the interior floor plan. Ford Shell Ring, we are still working with the town of Hilton Head, we are working with Cranston. They had some issues that they wanted to look at getting some redesign as far as the stormwater and a few small items, so we're working with Cranston to change those and resubmit to Hilton Head. Oakley River Park, construction, of course, is on, in progress, looking good. We have no issues as of right now. We did have to resubmit for our dock permit. We've changed the location of the dock to shift it left a little bit based on some erosion and some infield changes, basically, that were decided upon that it needed to shift about 50 feet to the left, so we've had to resubmit to BCM for that approval, and that's expected to go through within the next few months. It will be towards the end of the project when that gets installed now, but should not hold up the progress of the project entirely. Let's see. Bluffton Recreation Center, we're still waiting on some, some plans back. We had some design issues with the elevator shaft. We're waiting on some engineer drawings back on that, but again, it is moving forward. We have decided, though, that we will probably push this off and allow summer camp. We're not going to displace the children for the summer camp, so we're gonna push this off to construction in August. Pine View Preserve, passive parks, actually went before ZBOA on the 24th. They did receive variances for several items. Those were approved, and we're making changes to that. And again, we've got our coastal zone consistency permit was submitted in January, and we've already gotten some feedback on that, so hopefully that will be progressing faster than the six to nine months that has been taking in the past. Let's see, MC Riley Pool, so this is a big one. We have neared, neared final construction. We're working on punch-out items, punch list items for the contractor, along with some added items that we were doing for the cleanup of the pool, basically getting the pool ready for DEHAC inspection. We had a preliminary inspection. There were some items that they wanted to make sure were taken care of, minor kind of cleanup items, and we are working through those now, and we'll go for another inspection once the change order has been submitted to DEHAC or DBSE, DES now, yes. But coming along nicely, looking alike June 1st, anticipated date of opening, so as long as everything is moving forward with that, should be good to go. Detention Center, finally, Stucco Repair has begun. It looks fantastic. They are ahead of schedule. They're into now Phase Two, heading into Phase Three, and they're running about two weeks ahead of schedule currently. And that's it for my update right this second. Any questions?
Remind me where Pine View is?
It's in my district.
Is that on Lays Island? Okay, I know where it is.
Yes. Right across from Royal Pines on the right-hand side of Sands Point Road.
I tell you, people are really looking forward to that getting open. You said there were some variants that were issued. Where can we find?
Certainly. Yeah, absolutely. There were, there were two variances that were issued.
Sure, so I'll speak to the variances. We have a birding platform where you can go out and observe, and we asked for a variance to move that closer to the marsh, to make it more usable, and we have a shared driveway there, and we get, we had a reduced side setback with a fence added into the buffer so that it was more cost-effective for us to provide access on that side of the property, so right-hand side of the property.
That's that one house.
Yes, sir, it's adjacent to that house. Yes, sir, that's what those were. And that concludes our report.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will start getting into some of our items here then. Number eight is gonna be presentation on history of dirt road paving program. Can I have a motion to put that presentation on?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Jared, how are you today?
I'm doing great. So Brian was planning to be here. He is on a vacation, family vacation, traveling back, but wasn't able, since it got moved, isn't gonna be able to make it in time, so I am pinch hitting. It's a pretty substantial pinch hit, because he had a lot of items on the agenda, so I'm pinch hitting for him. And we're pulling up. Can y'all see? Okay. There's something back there. It's unfortunate that Mr. Glover and Mr. Dawson are not here, because this is up their alley as far as dirt road paving improvements. So what we wanted to cover, this actually ties in to number nine, the next item on the agenda, because it has something to do with dirt roads as well as our legacy roads. And what this covers is a history of what we've done over the last essentially 35 years since we've been paving dirt roads. And so really good information. This is a research project, a history project that staff put on, and really good information to share. So do I have control of these? Okay, I'll just head and eye. And first, I'm just gonna kind of cover the basics from the AIS, this really good overview and summary, but I'm sure over the past 35 year, or excuse me, my math is off, 30 years, 31 years, over the 11 council districts, we have improved 333 roads to a tune of 106 miles. So that is improving from dirt to either rock or paved, most of them being rocked. As you can see, a lot of those, the majority of those are in the northern part of the county, specifically District One and District Three, but you can also see all the, all the remaining ones as well where they're from. So anyhow, a lot of good information there. Another source of good information, before I go through the spreadsheet and this tiny spreadsheet on the screen, is kind of some background information. So, again, taking you back in, in history a little bit, county government got established formally in South Carolina in 1975 via the Home Rule Act. So up until then, there wasn't a formal process. There was government-like activities, but there wasn't county government as we know it today. Then in about the 90s, you started seeing some more legislation coming through, and prior to 1994, the county had maintained a lot of different dirt roads, some which were considered private, some they owned, but just a lot of them in general. But they really didn't have any, any claim of ownership, they just maintained them because people asked them to maintain them, and that's how government worked back then. So in 1993, so this is very important information, because this is, like I said, ties into our next subject, and you can't know where you're going till you know where you've been. So in 1994 is when the C-Fund sales, our CTC legislation came out, so we're familiar with CTC now, but essentially that gave a portion of, of state gas tax to local governments for them to put forth to use to public roads. They, they could do some of that on their own public roads, but then a portion of it had to be expended back on the DOT's network. But the caveat was that it was a public road. So that's the prefaces, precipice, that's, that was the starting point for us to really, county council took action in 1993, ahead of the 94 siege fund law, for us to think about how we maintain our roads. And what they did there was, was three items. They said, any roads that we've been maintaining for 20 years, we're going to claim those and continue maintaining those. And through that, they just claimed the prescriptive right, so whatever we've been maintaining and blatant, this is what we're gonna say is our road. Then they said, option two is if there's a road that we've been maintaining for 10 years or so, we're gonna give the landowners opportunity to petition and request that we continue to maintain it. So they did that. And then lastly, for all roads less than 10 years in maintenance, they said they were going to cease maintaining operation of those. And again, now the C-Fund is here, and is a way of them to really pour money into these roads and assets, but only if they were publicly owned. So fast forward, from 1994, county had hired staff, staff of designers and surveyors, and started preparing, preparing plans to do a lot of these projects in-house. This is very similar to how DOT worked in the day. They had their own surveying crew, their own engineering crew, and DOT did a lot of their own projects, so we were much the same. But come the early, mid 2000s, some of that started changing. DOT started hiring outside consultants and staff to do a lot of more of the design, and the county started following suit. So our, our staffing got lean and mean, and then followed in years, in 2016, the council, and specifically the CTC, started making some qualitative ways of the way they were, right now, they were, whoever raised their hand or the squeaky wheel got the re, got the road improvements. So they said, we need to put some plans in place on how we do that, so 2016, they started with that, and that was really on the resurfacing component. And then later, in 2020, they codified the first time council did this with CTC, a five-year plan on our dirt road paving program. And so similarly, we already had a, a resurfacing program, five-year plan in place, and so kind of using the same footprint as with the right-of-way, whatever right-of-way we had available, whatever mile or average daily traffic, and the cost benefit, how much, how much does it cost us to maintain this road was studied. So we did that, and we established our first five-year plan, and then in '22, we went ahead and updated it and started the, a second five-year plan, and both of those five-year plans were adopted through county council. In general, we, we get about four roads improved a year, that gets about one mile of road improvement. And the funding, we have two sources of funding to, to do dirt roads, or we historically have, which have been historically have, which have been CTC and TAG. So TAG is when you renew your registration at the DMV. Beaufort County has had a TAG fee since the 70s. It was $2 back in the 70s. It got updated to $10 in the early 90s, and then through the 2000s, mid-2000s, $16, and presently is $20. So other than raising that, and a little bit of recent, in 2017, when the state passed updated sales tax or gas tax, the funds have been pretty steady between CTC and TAG over the last 20 years or so. And we've got more roads that have been improved, and CTC has determined that they want to spend their money more on resurfacing, and then thus the TAG program is working more on dirt road paving. So we're, have the basically same amount of dollars coming in, about $2.5, $3 million in TAG, but you can imagine that's getting less and less mileage each year. So right now, we're at about a mile. It's looking to decrease closer to 3/4 of a mile unless we inject additional funds. So to the spreadsheet, if you have that in front of you and can zoom in and follow along. But essentially, over the last 31 years, we have improved 317 roads throughout the county, within the different districts, totaling 105 miles. So pretty substantial. Out of that, to the far right, you see number of unimproved and miles unimproved. So what we have remaining in unimproved dirt roads is 195 dirt roads, which equates to 70, just a little over 70 miles of unimproved dirt roads. All right, so now the next slide that just shows it in, kind of takes the spreadsheet and puts it in a graphical, graphical format. There we go. And you can see, again, District One, Two, and Three, kind of the big ones there in the different colors. And then these are the roads, kind of the same genre, and the roads that are being prepared in the next five years. Again, we have a qualitative-based, five-year program based off what's available on right-of-way, the average daily traffic, and the cost-benefit analysis. And that provides us with our current five-year plan. So this is the second five-year plan that we've done. The first one, we've fully completed. We're in the last stages. We've got three roads that are under construction, under contract right now, that will be constructed by the year end. And then we hope to put out this 2025 in the fall, late summer, fall, and those roads will move forward to design and then construction. We have a two-year plan. So we put out roads in a four, fives at a time, three or four at a time, and it's a design-build-project method. And so the first year is spent pretty much designing and putting those in the permitting process. And then the second year is actual construction. But each year, we put a project out, so we always have one that's pretty much in design and one that's under construction, and we have a cyclical way we do that. So the 2025 will be the first year of this upcoming five-year plan. So lastly, is this slide here. So out of the roads that we've maintained 100 or greater than 20 years, we've got 172 of those, of which 40, only 40 out of 172, we have full right-of-way. So what that means, the rest of them, either we have a couple tracks that have already donated the right-of-way, or most of those are in what we reference as the legacy status, i.e. just maintenance only. So we're not expending capital funds on those maintenance-only roads, only the roads that we have legacy or full right-of-way to, the 40. And that'll kind of lead into our next discussion item. But I'll kind of pause right there. I know I went through a lot of history and a lot of information, but just thought it was worthwhile to give a recap of all the work that county, that Beaufort County has done over the last 30 years in improving dirt roads. Quite substantial.
Do you have any questions for Jared?
I do. You made a comment that got me thinking. So I guess with the inflationary costs, the amount, the mileage we're able to do each year is potentially going to keep decreasing. Would it make sense to bond, because it looks like $10.2 million roughly for the five-year plan, would it make sense to bond that and use the funds to repay it? Go ahead and knock them out, and then repay that with the TAG funds that come in. What's the cost-benefit? Like, is it cheaper to pay the interest and knock it out now versus the inflationary cost and having it drag out?
Yeah. I know pinky size is lighting up over here. We haven't ran those numbers. It's a good thought. We haven't done that. I do think it would be a good comparison, but I don't know the answer standing up.
Yeah, it just literally popped in my head.
No, it's a great idea. And this is the same thing we've talked about in sales tax. We thought about putting a sum there, and that would do the same thing. It would basically put money there where you can pour some gasoline on the program. But you do hit an interesting note. Like, if we continue as is, our program is going to continue to diminish because of the cost of inflation to our prices getting product done.
The incorporated areas, dirt roads, the municipalities responsible for those?
Yes, so this is the ones that we maintain. There are some within the municipalities. They have a few dirt roads. Most of the municipality ones are paved, but each municipality has a few.
Yeah, I guess that was one of my only questions to piggyback off Alice. It showed District Seven had zero dirt roads left. Is that because the rest of the dirt roads fall within the municipality of the Town of Bluffton?
Yeah, either they're private, or Town of Bluffton, or ours are already paved.
Okay.
One other question, Mr. Chairman. All the roads that have been identified, the people actually want them paved, right? Because I know I have one in my district that probably would never want to be paved.
Yeah, the ones that we have, the 40, there's appetite for those to be paved. Now, the remainder, out of that 172, not all of those have the desire. But
Case on it.
That's right. And that's actually a great segue to our next topic, so.
With that, I think we will move on to number nine, because number eight was just presentation and discussion. If you don't mind, an ordinance establishing a formalization process for Beaufort County historically maintained roads known as legacy roads and the execution of any and all associated instruments and conveyance to the county. Can I have a motion to put that on the floor, please?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Something tells me, Jared, you're going to be up here for a while.
Yeah, unfortunately, y'all are going to hear my voice drone on for a little bit this afternoon or this morning.
I think they'd rather hear yours than mine, so it's fine.
So this one, like I said, I was leading into it with that earlier presentation, but this is what we see as the next iteration to prepare ourselves to acquire right-of-way. So if there is ever an inject of money, or just in general, to perfect our right-of-way. So like I said, in the 90s, council made a tough decision back at that time, and said, okay, we're either going to continue maintenance, we're going to give you the opportunity to petition for us to continue maintenance, or we're going to cease maintenance. And where this goes is essentially, when they did that, they said they were going to maintain it, but they didn't make the conveyance, that they didn't have the actual, the appropriate documents for clear title. So we've been maintaining these roads for a long time, under the prescriptive title that we carry through the maintenance. So the goal here is just to aim to get clear title documents for all the assets that we own and manage in Beaufort County. That's the overall goal. And so what we put together, and this is, yes, good, thank you, is a procedure that we're suggesting would be a way for us to move forward to actually go and get these documents in clear title. And so the first one is identify which the extent of the right-of-way. So right now, we just have a standard 50-foot right-of-way. You want your road paved, you've got to give us the 50-foot right-of-way. All the property owners that are involved on that parcel are on that roadway. And then what we're saying here is maybe we need to look at that. Maybe not every road needs 50 feet. Maybe this one, for whatever reason, only needs 30 feet, or we can single-cross slope it, or we can do different things engineer. We don't need drainage on both sides, just on one ditch on one side. Whatever the measure is, identify that early on, and then start researching the property owners, so we can start making contact with them. So once we have those two, we can reach out to them and tell the property owners that live, this is our intent, this is what we have, and that we're seeking out right-of-way. And then step four, this is kind of where it goes to what the council did in the 90s, is so if we get feedback back in step four, it says, yes, all the property owners, hands down, we would like that, then we move forward and we obtain the right-of-way for the entire roadway. Now, by obtaining the right-of-way, we just talked about the funding, doesn't necessarily mean your road will get funded or paved right-of-way, but it will give us the opportunity to move forward and expend capital on a road that now we have clear title to, where in the past we didn't. The second thing is if we get a majority of affected property owners willing to grant the right-of-way, this happens a lot, then county council can give guidance to staff to go and seek through negotiations or other means, the additional right-of-way. So a lot of times, we'll get eight out of 10 that say yes, and we have two holdouts. And so the road never gets to our paving list because we don't have full right-of-way, and so it stays in this limbo area. So in that scenario, if we get the eight out of 10, then staff can go and pursue that. Right now, we're not pursuing it because we haven't got it full. And then the last one is if we come back and we get, we don't want to give you the right-of-way, then there's kind of two steps. As David, as you mentioned, either we continue maintaining it as is, or we bring that back to council and say, we're either going to have clear title or not, and if we can't pursue and get clear title, then we're going to deem this as a private road and discontinue maintenance. So we think that's a similar stance that previous council took, and that's the reason we would be suggesting that to this council. So those are the three steps. And then as you go down, then we would, in contract with legal attorneys and right-of-way agents to help us draft the necessary conveyance instruments, and then we would work with the property owners and have community meetings as needed, and then start obtaining the signatures. And then lastly, as you move on down to recording, we would record, we get the signatures there in Item Four. We get the signatures, we'd go ahead and get those drafted and taken to the registers, deed and recorded those. And then we know that a lot of roads that we have within the county have heirs' property. And so what we've been successful at before is just getting an affidavit from the property owners for the family members that we can. And that's worked in some cases for conveyance. In other cases, I know this is sometimes a dirty term, but condemnation, in the event of this, where we have heirs' property, we consider what's called a friendly condemnation, is in order to get the title corrected, because there's so many outstanding property owners that we're never going to be able to get everybody's affidavit, that the family agrees to allow for that, for us to take the appropriate measures in order to get the title cleared up and cleared. So that's working with heirs' property. And then the last step, step six, if we get to that eight out of 10, and we want to press forward, and staff has reached out and negotiated and coordinated with the property owners, but then we can't get to the last step, then we would bring that back to council and say, we've exhausted all measures. Do you want us to move forward with a condemnation action, or what would you choose for staff to pursue? So these are kind of the process of what we propose as a way for us to aim and get clear title to the assets that we currently manage under prescriptive means. And then there would be a corresponding ordinance that would go with this and allow for this process to take place. So I guess with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman. Jared, first of all, thanks for all of that. It's helped me understand. I think you answered the question as well. With all the paved roads, you say assets. Are you talking about the stormwater drainage on either side that goes along, like with, you know, Point Comfort, Cedar Woods and all that?
Yeah, asset is the whole, whether it's the pavement, or the rock road, or the drainage, all that is asset, yes.
Thank you. That's very good work. I appreciate it.
Within the right-of-way, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Like we did with Bay Pines and getting that right-of-way for that ditch. Cedar Woods is trying to get the roads transferred over to Hilton Head. We're trying to help them there. I mean, that's a huge undertaking, but I think this is good for the community to hear as well on how this all comes together. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions for Jared?
Yeah, I have one. I appreciate the approach and the formalization of this, but maybe I missed it. I like what you said about kind of going off the standardization, not everything needs to be 50. Look at it kind of case by case. Where, is that language captured in there?
Yeah, just identify, step one, preliminary assessment.
And that's going to become part of the ordinance?
Yeah, well, so this procedure would be backup to the ordinance.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I had one question. If we have a question about a particular road in our district, and just email you, is that okay?
Yeah, email me, and then I'll get engineering staff to
Look at it?
To look at it, yes, absolutely.
It may be a private road.
Yep.
Thanks.
David, to appease you, we can add the language under order to say, as displayed in Exhibit Eight.
Yeah, I just want them to have the flexibility to make sure that it's referenced back to, yeah. Thank you.
My question's a little different, not necessarily the language or the action, but reading, going through all six steps that you say need to be taken, I guess at what point is that, I don't want to say wasting county staff's time or resources, but we're all on board for paving the roads, for emergency surfaces or drainage, whatever it might be. But at what point is it us battling the homeowners, and not because of lack of education or resources, but just because they don't want to, are we just turning our wheels and wasting it? So where does that line come in?
Well, I think that's at the very beginning. So if council decides to act on this, then our first step is identifying the right-of-way and what we need, and then sending out notices to all the property owners. So there's little cost other than postage and a little bit of research. Once we get into really going and having community meetings and negotiating and getting the right-of-way and formalizing the instruments, that's when we'd be incurring costs. More than likely, we'd ask, we have a right-of-way agent, RFP, or excuse me, an on-call list that we would utilize, and have some consultant services help us bear that workload. And then as much as we can do the legal instrument, and then however much legal services we need to implement that. So I guess, in short, we wouldn't have a lot of spinning our wheels until we get return postage back from individuals and whether they want it or don't want it.
Because I'm all on board for the education piece. I mean, heck, I've learned a ton about this last couple of years since I've been on county council. And I wouldn't even know where to begin the process before this. If I had a dirt road that needed to get paved, I just don't want to go down that trail of us being wanting to get it done, and the homeowners or property owners not really caring to get it done, but we're just pushing to push it because it's an agenda of ours and not something that they actually want to get done, where we could use as tax fund somewhere else. But that makes sense, because I know, moment you go into condemnation, you're buying the right-of-way. It's not being signed over somewhere, and they were going to have to pay more money than already the paving of it, whatever it is, but also to buy, purchase the right-of-way too. So just was curious where that line was. Does county have the final say? Is that something that staff gets to decide? Is it the administrator? Where does that line go in there?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So we'd send out the notices, we'd get information back, and we can give an update where we are, an in-stride update. And then if we're getting good feedback, that's one thing. If we're getting negative feedback, we can let you know. If we're getting where, like you said, the condemnation, that is, we have to pay a fair price at that point. But regularly, this is at gratis. We are not paying for the right-of-way. We have historically not paid for a right-of-way under our dirt road paving program, and that would be the same in this measure. But if we get to a point where we want to get the last two out of 10 properties, and that's the only method available, then that is that. So I don't think there would be action at that level without you already, council already, hearing an update in stride.
Any other questions for Jared?
I have a question, please. Jared, will this be discussed with CTC or presented to them?
It will be presented really as information. Their stance right now is they're not participating in dirt road paving. They're simply resurfacing and pavement management. simply resurfacing and pavement management.
But it would be good for the members of that committee to hear and see the data.
Yep, and we, we have a lot of them that have asked about dirt roads and getting paved. So, yeah, we would definitely share, we share a lot of things that CTC isn't necessarily paying for, um, road wise, going on in the county, so I feel sure we would share it with them.
Perfect. Um, this goes on to county council next after the vote.
That's correct.
All right. Do we see any objection with number nine? Can this be passed? Number nine is approved with no objection. We'll move on to number 10. An ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents, conveyance of right of way known as Orange Court, Prince William Drive, Indigo Woods Court to the town of Port Rock, town of Port Royal. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Bartholomew. Uh, open it up for discussion again for you, Jared.
Yeah, so this, Port Royal's been very proactive in seeking out, um, roads, either DOT or county-owned roads in their jurisdiction, specifically in their downtown area. And so, um, they've been reaching out and then now they're owning those and maintaining. And so this is just another series of road that's been identified as county-owned that they are seeking, um, conveyance of so that they can maintain them as city-owned roads. So three mile, or three roads that total a quarter of a mile, so really small roads in their kind of downtown-ish area.
Do we have any questions or discussion about this? Can this also be approved with no objection? All right, number 10 will move on with no objection. I'm going to have David take a couple of these next ones for me if you guys don't mind.
Yeah, I'm going to tag in. Number 11 is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of right of way down the 16th Street Extension and a related drainage easement to the town of Port Royal. Does not appear to be any fiscal impact. Uh, can I have a motion to open up discussion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to open this up for discussion.
Alice with a motion, make it a second.
I'll second it.
And Tab with the second. All right.
All right, so this one, um, I have some support here, so when I get to the end of my knowledge, I'll hand it over. Um, but in this, this one came about a couple of years ago in summer of '22. So Port Royal had a concerned citizen reach out about some drainage at the end of 16th Street Extension, and upon their research, it was identified that the county owned the, the rights to this drainage easement and road. And so, um, going through that, similar to what you guys just did on the previous item, we came forward, we brought that forward to county council and through committee and council, and it was going forward. And then, um, a citizen raised a, a case against the ownership about the county owning it. So, um, that case has been in litigation for a couple of years, has since worked its way through, and, um, it's been deemed that the county does own this right of way and easement. And so now it's back to county committee since it's been a long time. We're coming back to committee and council to convey that ownership right over to the city of Port Royal, town of Port Royal. If you have questions about the litigation or any of that, I'm going to turn to Patty Wilson, our right of way agent, and, um, our lawyer that's been retained through this case, Tab Bendel.
I wouldn't necessarily say question about the litigation itself, but was the argument that we believed we own it or did not believe we owned it?
I'm pretty sure the argument was from the citizen that they believed that we did not own it.
I can answer that.
Morning, how are you?
Good. Um, initially, um, when the citizen that lived along 16th Street contacted the town, the assumption was that the town owned it. And so, uh, when, uh, we did title search, um, we realized that the deed of right of way, um, was in fact in the county's name, as was a separate document, which is the stormwater easement. Um, so the town, um, wanted to make the improvements to the drainage, which was pretty terrible. Um, so we contacted the county to see if they would be amenable. Um, during that process, I think it went through maybe, I know first reading, if not second reading, um, one of the property owners at the very end of this, uh, road, um, filed a lawsuit to make a determination, um, as to whether or not the county owned it in fee or if they just had an easement interest. So no one was really able to determine that based on the title search, so he filed a declaratory judgment action. So that was the subject. Um, the court has ruled that, um, he owns the property that the county has an easement, um, along 16th Street Extension, as well as the drainage easement that's at, um, the end of the road. So because the town has an interest in assuming those obligations, that's what we've asked the county in the past to do, and that's what we're asking again, just because of the makeup of council is new and a year or two has gone by since this first, you know, this issue was first addressed. We wanted to bring it back to committee and then ultimately county, um, council.
I'm sorry?
Oh, sure, Thomas Bendel, I'm sorry. I'm an attorney with Howell Gibson and Hughes, and I handled the litigation for Beaufort County as well as, uh, the town of Port Royal. Their interests were aligned, um, throughout the process, just because the county at the time had an interest in, um, you know, I guess ridding themselves of that obligation, and the town had an interest in accepting it, you know, because it's the citizens there along six.
Have the improvements been done on the easement yet?
They have not. We're waiting on this transfer for the town to do that.
And that Port Royal's going to pay for the.
Correct.
Easement or the, um, improvements for the drainage?
Correct. And the infrastructure's been in place, unfortunately, just over the past 20 years, there's been no maintenance to it. Um, but there are culverts and everything that's, um, that's set up, it just more or less needs to be improved.
Any other questions on this matter?
I guess my only other question is, do we have, uh, and I don't, I don't think it needs to be public record necessarily in the backup material, but we have an order from a judge cleaning everything up.
Yes, sir, I believe it's in your packet. If not, I can certainly draw one to you, but there's, uh.
I don't, I don't need it. As long as, as long as it's out there, we're good to go.
Yes, sir, we're good. And the, and the time for appeals has passed, so the order stands.
Second. Cool, perfect. All right, uh, any further questions on this matter? Can this move forward without objection? Seeing no objection, this will move forward, and thank you. All right, the next one's number 12, a resolution to approve and authorize the administrator to execute the third addendum to the memorandum of understanding with the town of Hilton Head and St. James Baptist Church for the St. James Baptist Church relocation project. So moved. All right, and can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, uh, floor is yours.
All right, thank you. So this, as you mentioned, is the third addendum. So the first addendum was in 2020, the county and the town came together and said, hey, we want to work up an FAA package to submit to, um, make this project come to life. So we'd put some money together and 300,000 in total, and we started going down that path. Uh, not a lot took place over the following years, but later in '23, this project caught some more wind, and we updated that agreement in October of '23, and we added the church as a partner. Included in that, we also added a consultant that would work underneath the church as a partner, um, as, as a project manager, their name being Your Church Partners. So that was the updated agreement in 2023. And then last year in '24, we updated it a second time, which was basically to move everything included, the full design and project management services, um, for that Your Church Partner consultant, to include that within the arrangement of the three stakeholders. So bring, fast forward, what's taking place is the design has been moving forward, we are at a place where we are nearing, uh, submitting for permits and getting close to put that out to bid, hopefully later this summer, the project, where both of those items come back in, um, hopefully late this fall, so we can potentially award a contract and move that project to construction. Um, in coordinating with the town, they suggested that maybe we need to, um, codify this next step where we are, the overall project costs and, um, how we move forward on the parcel. So the planned parcel that the church is moving to is a five-acre parcel off-site from the airport that the, that the town owns. So one step is that the, that the, um, since the church does not own it, they can't apply for a permit in a property that they don't own, so they would need to be named as an authorized agent so that they can apply for that permit, the town permits. And secondly is the definition of the contributing cost. So I'm not sure, do we have the backup we can pull up?
I just have the AIS.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, uh, I'll talk through it, but in essence, um, what this does is it spells out the different funding sources that are part of the project, and then the responsibilities of the three stakeholders, um, for the, for the remainder of the project. So just to short summary, the overall project cost is $12.7 million. That includes the cost of the land, both the existing church and the future church parcel. Uh, we started with that initial MOU in 2020, which was 300,000, thank you. And then since then, we've received two state appropriations. Senator Davis has got two appropriations, um, one of 4 million, or one of 750,000 to the church, and then a subsequent one of 4 million, so 4.75 million in total. And then, like I said, you see the two values of the church parcel, and then the remainder is the, um, all those items less what's owed, which is 3.6 million dollars. So that would be the county's portion is 3.6 million dollars. Um, one thing to point out is our portion, the county's portion in cash, we have 3.5 million dollars that has been set aside for, um, the bond, as well as 150, um, inside of the original agreement. And then also, these are considering that 12.7, that all of these costs are hard costs. The 1.29 million, the 1.3 million for the church, um, that will be received by the church, and then they would put that back into the project cost. So, um, although we have 3.6 million dollars in value, uh, actually, the project value will be 3.6 minus the 1.3 is how much the county's portion will be. The responsibilities, um, what this does is essentially the, the town, uh, donates the property, and that's their contribution to the project. Uh, the church contributes their property to, that goes to the, to the airport, it gets purchased with the FAA funding and belongs airport county parcels, and then they also put their contributing funds back into the project costs. And then the county is responsible party for, um, administering the con, contract and the overruns associated with the remainder of the project. Um, so those are the different, uh, highlights, responsibilities that are highlighted in the agreement. And I think with that, I'll take any questions that you have regarding this proposed amendment.
Question?
Can you, uh, you explained it back in an excellent manner, but the, if and when
we get money from FAA, where will it go back to?
Yeah, so.
And how much do we think we'll get?
Yeah, so we think based off, uh, let me go back a step and answer that. So there was discussion at one point about, and this is why it got hung up for so many years, getting a like-for-like project and FAA contributing. FAA would never give us an answer what that dollar amount was. Finally, they gave us a, a head nod of an answer that they would have to go through some special, um, I forget the term, reconcileiate, some term.
Administrative settlement.
Administrative settlement, above and beyond their normal property acquisition. So in doing that, they still weren't going to get very high, maybe 2 million dollars. Uh, and that would include the property itself. So the, the property itself is valued at 1.3 million dollars roughly. And so, um, the decision is that, that we are moving forward with the property itself, which allowed us, the project to move forward faster. And in doing so, to answer your question specifically, uh, the county will receive, the county will make a grant application and purchase the property and use FAA grant a 90-10 split and pay 1.3 million dollars to the church. 90 of that is coming from FAA. We will have 10%, 130,000. Once they receive that, the church, they will turn around and add that to the overall cost to perform the project.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, that helps a lot.
I have a question, Mr. Cunningham. So I'm looking at the AIS, it says, obviously, we're going to be responsible for any cost overruns, and then I love you put, but will also benefit from underruns or supplemental funding secured. But you said these are hard costs.
These are hard costs. The only thing, um, this is our latest and greatest cost estimate. Um, so we won't have a hard cost until we actually have a bid, and then we'll have that. Um, and so the, the underruns or overruns, um, so let me explain that a little bit. So we have 3.6 million dollars in cash. What's not included in that is the 1.3 million dollars will come back as cash into the project. So when you subtract that from project cost, now our 3.6 million is really 2.3 million in cash outlay. Additionally, um, if, if Senator Davis has proposed to, to make an earmark appropriation request, um, for an additional amount this fiscal year in Columbia, whether that happens or not, that's to be determined. So right now, our outlay is really not 3.6 million, but it's really 2.3 million. We have 3.5 set aside in the bond, so we actually have buffer, um, if it overruns, if we, if the project cost comes in higher than the planned, um, construction costs, we have some buffer there in our, in our funding that's already established. Also, if we get additional earmark from Senator Davis, that too would come off our 2.3 million that we would need to put in.
I do appreciate your sticking with this. I know this project's been a long time coming. I know Mr. McKellen was involved in this early on as well, so this is great bringing it to fruition.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Jared, you took just a brief moment to talk about where we started, where we came from. Joining this council, I became a member of that working group, and between you and John Remble, that man sitting right there, you've done a tremendous amount of work to get us to where it is, and it's not been easy. This has been a back and forth seesaw battle, and you ought to be commended with John's efforts to get this where we're going. And I tell you, like we said, McCall, Mr. McKellen did some good work early on. You've got a great support, and, um, we appreciate all you're doing. This is a big deal. You might want to touch on how many years, years it's been since they've had services like where they, you know, get that church moved. I mean, this is a phenomenal project to get done.
Absolutely, yeah. I know it's been a while, um, it's a long time in the making. Mr. Ford, the representative, he'll tell you it's been even longer, so.
Sure, but thank you very much, though, I mean that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Joe, did you have any comments on this?
Uh, you've used the term earmarks. There are two appropriations there. What's the reality, since earmarks are no longer part of the South Carolina budget?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know the reality of this year's earmarks. The ones that we already have, they are there. They are sitting in the, our checking account, um, the previous ones. Not knowing what's going on in Columbia, I can't give you a full answer, but I think the version of earmarks, if anything happens this year, it will show up differently in the state budget, i.e. through agencies versus direct appropriations, if it shows up at all. So I don't, I don't know, we'll, we'll have to watch together. But I do know the two existing ones are, they're in our checking account today to be expended upon.
All right, are there any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, can this move forward without objection?
Yes.
All right, seeing no objection, uh, this is approved, and we'll move forward to county council.
Before you do the next one, can we just acknowledge to Mr. Dawson, or Ms. Lawson, and Mr. Passman have all joined us too for the record?
You want to take that over, or you want me to come on?
If you could do a couple of them, good.
All right, uh, moving into item 13, which is modification number one of the signal maintenance agreement between Beaufort County and SCDOT. Uh, the fiscal impact here, the new modification to the 2024 SMA allowance for reimbursement from SCDOT to Beaufort County in an amount not to exceed 199,250 annually. I believe you're still going to be standing here for the presentation, but can I get a motion and a second?
A motion.
All right, thank you, Paula. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Tab, and the floor is yours.
All right, yeah, you have me for a bit longer, so. Um, so this one is, everybody's heard of SMA, this is our signal maintenance agreement with DOT. This gives us the ability to manage and maintain the signals, to have a, a closer and quicker response time to traffic in our county. Um, so every three years, there's a three-year contract that established, and then there's a update annually, just if we've added any signals or made any adjustments since then. So the original three-year, uh, agreement was, was approved last year in '24, and so this is the first year update. So we have 42 signals that we manage and seven flash, school zone flashers. Most of our assets are in the southern part of the county, and the reason is the city of Beaufort has their own SMA that they manage with DOT, and Hilton Head has their own SMA. We're the three entities that have our agreements with DOT on the signals. Um, we split the signals in the north of the Broad with, with DOT, or with the city of Beaufort, and we also share. Beaufort, and we also share on-call status, so we have a week on and a week off, and we, we share that with them equally. What this does, it provides, we have a base payment, and then anytime we have equipment that needs replacing, we replace that, and then through this agreement, seek reimbursement. Two things to note on this, and Mr. McKellen isn't here, but I'll, I'll express it anyhow, is the Windmill Harbor signal. So that signal got implemented in between years, so this only gets updated once a year. So it would be due for it to be included in the SMA this year, because it was installed in the field last year. However, with our agreement with, with Hilton Head, through our joint resolution on the 278 project, that is going to enter into their SMA, so it's not coming to us, but it is being captured. And then, secondly, we've installed the, the signal there at Oldfield, so that one is getting captured and brought in. So that's a little bit on the funding, why there's a little bit of a difference from last year. So all in all, our, our reimbursement availability was 197,000 last year, and it's 199,250 this year.
I have a question, please. Your seven school zone flashers, is one of those, the one on Bluffton Parkway that we keep getting complaints about?
No, that is, so the ones, so we have a few assets that we own that are not in the SMA agreement, because we totally own those outright. So I, I believe that's one that we own. I can double-check and follow up.
I was just curious. And also, how timely does, do they reimburse us? Is it like FEMA, we get five years to wait?
No, no, they're pretty timely. It's usually within the, we submitted, and I don't know if it's monthly or quarterly, but it's, it's fairly reasonable.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, can this, oh, sorry, Joe, didn't see anything.
Are there any traffic studies as part of this SMA?
There's a provision for professional services. It's pretty small. I think it's around the $10,000 mark. So they do allow for that, and we, we utilize that. But if we have major access management or anything like that, it's not to that scale.
Actually, I do have a question, not so much, not so much about this necessarily, but does this model work? I mean, it, it doesn't, going to other states, North Carolina, Georgia, I feel like they do it differently. They have a better flow of traffic overall.
Yep.
Does, does this platform work at all?
It, yeah, I mean, there's, there's pros and cons to it. So one of the, the pros is that local governments and local municipalities, they're much more reactive and receptive to knowing where's signal not operating, or, and so the response time is the biggest thing. Also, if we want to modify, we have a, an event that's going to take place, we can set up a specific timing for that. So it just allows for more response and being a little bit more flexible at the local level. Otherwise, DOT is responding from Charleston when a light goes on flash on Hilton Head, or not Hilton Head, but in Bluffton.
And I get the local, you know, being able to respond better, but I mean, even within the different agencies within the county, is there, I understand there's cooperation, but is that just for maintenance?
So essentially, what this does is, if this agreement wasn't in place, DOT would have to staff up or contract up. And we're, in essence, their extra staff and their extra contracting, because they're paying us for the services rendered. What it allows is a little bit of flexibility and ownership at the local level. Otherwise, there would be zero, and DOT would get to it when they get to it.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, can this move forward without objection?
Yes.
All right, seeing no objection, this will move forward. And Logan, do you want to take back in?
Yeah. All right, moving on to number 14, change order to IPW Construction Group Contract for Laurel Bay Road Pathway Project, fiscal impact 128,167.12. This will be paid out of our 2018 one-cent sales tax. Do we have a motion to put this on the floor?
I'll make the motion.
And a second by Mr. Dawson, thank you.
Jared?
All right, firstly, IPW is their name. I know it stands for something, I think it's International Public Works, but they contract by that. I know you like to make sure we don't have abbreviations, but that's their name, IPW. So this is our pathway at Laurel Bay. This is essentially a balance change order. At the end of the project, when we close it out, we clean up the balance, so we can close out with a zero sum. And in essence, the project is fully complete. We've had the grand opening, they're substantially complete. This is cleaning up the back, backside of it. And what this change order is, there was some impacts due to Hurricane Debbie that we had to work out. There were some utility relocation costs that we had to work out, and then some bond overrun, so they had the performance bond that they had to extend because of some of these outstanding change orders. And so what this does, this cleans all that up. We actually anticipate there may be some reimbursement from some of the utilities out of this. We're still working with the utilities on that. But this fully concludes the Laurel Bay Pathway Project, not only the construction, but the finances and all. So that's what this change order is about.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to, this ensures us that this is the final.
That's correct, yes, sir.
I want to thank you, Jared, and administrative staff for the.
Now, we're in the final stage of actually concluding the, the project. I want to thank the county administrator, Mr. Moore, for his quick response to an incident where we had, at one of the intersections, where the, the grass that was planted along the sidewalk had overgrown the, the process or the height to where the pedestrians couldn't get out of side roads onto the 116. And I contacted the county administrator, and he, he sent the crews out and had the, had the situation resolved immediately, so thank you, sir. All right.
What was the total funding for this project?
4,959.40.79.
The 13 is the balance before, after we take out this 128K?
Before.
Okay. Yeah, that's the total amount left in the account prior to taking out this 128. All right, any objection? And this will move on with no objection. We will go on to number 15, change order for Boundary Street and Rebo Road Signal Ti, wow, Signal Timing and Crash Analysis Contract, fiscal impact 39,005. The change order will increase the total contract to 214,305. Do we have a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All right, this is open for discussion. Just reading this bottom part, you're saying that the difference will be paid through?
Yeah, so the city of Beaufort is going to actually pay for this 39,000, but I, I can describe that more fully if you like.
Yes, sir.
So what this is, is we have a commitment as part of our federal grant that was a part of the Boundary Street project, so this is going way back. At the conclusion of that project, we have a requirement to do analysis of how it's performed, so they want a pre and a post. So this is a post-analysis off the safety improvements and timing improvements that we made to that corridor. So we started that effort in May of '22, and then, right as we were kicking off, the city of Beaufort, they maintained those signals under their SMA. And before we could implement new timing, they had to update some of their side roads. So the, the main corridor was improved, but the side road and the equipments associated with that. It took them a little while to get that done, about two years. And so they've been working through that, and we've held this contract open until we have that done. So we already had everything ready to implement. And so what this cost is, we had to go out there, since it's been a period of time, and get some updated timing counts and updated traffic counts to put back in the model that's already prepared for us to spit out the appropriate signal timing adjustments. So we'll, we'll do that work, and then the city of Beaufort will pay us through, we have an IGA already through the city of Beaufort for engineering services, so they'll pay us the expenditure, and then we'll hand that off to them, and they will input these signal times. You should see a little bit of relief on Boundary Street as far as the coordination between the signals once implemented.
Do we have any questions?
I do have a question. So is this only looking at Boundary and Rebo, or is it also going to take into account, was it Marsh Drive right there by Starbucks?
Yeah, yeah, so it, those signals, all these signals actually kind of work together. They're, they're coordinated to a degree. So all the ones on Boundary Street from 170 up through Marsh, it actually goes, I believe, all the way to the National Cemetery, can't think of the road right now, and then down Rebo, all the way to Ladies Island Drive. So all those signals are on a connected series, and so you should see improvement on both roads of some degree.
Yeah, because currently, it seems like those two aren't necessarily synced.
Yeah, Marsh, Marsh and Boundary, you see a lot of conflict as far as you get a red light and then a green light, or a green light and a red light. So it should, it should help.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Can this be done with no objection? And I see no objection, this will also move on. On to number 16, contract award to MAJ Enterprises Inc. for Bruce Edgar Lee Parking Improvements, fiscal impact is 245,405. Increase, it looks like it's 43,000, Jared?
No, so this is a new contract. So I guess maybe I can, you want to take a motion, and then I?
Yeah, can we take a motion? Okay, I see, yes. Can we put a motion and put this on the floor?
Yeah, and I'll second.
And second.
Okay, so this is, we had previously the construction of the park there at Bruce Edgar Lee, and then this is on the perimeter improvement of the parking spaces. And it's more than parking, there's drainage and sidewalk, all in that area that's included in this. So we put out a base bid, and then we had two add alternatives. One was to add additional four spaces, and one was to upgrade it from gravel to pervious pavement. So both of those were included, so we took the base bid, so if you go to the fiscal impact, the base bid was 155,000, and then the additional, the two add alternatives were 43,000 collected together. And then, we, or, excuse me, 43,000 was for the pervious payment and 20, for the additional parking, and 24 for the pervious payment. So 43 plus 24, and then we added a 10% contingency on all of that of 22,000. So when you add all four up, 155, 43, 24, and 22, that gets you to the total contract value of 245. So what this provides for is those 10 spaces plus the four, so it gives us 14, I believe, altogether. And this is adjacent to the handicap area, or includes the handicap area next to the park.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
It's kind of strange to me that this will be in fiscal year '26 funding, why is it coming now?
Yes, so what we're trying to do is to get ahead, and thank you for pointing that out, I forgot to say that. So this is planned for in the upcoming budget, in the CIP budget, we have 250,000 allocated for this planned project. So the goal is to have this prepped and ready to go pending final approval of the budget. So it will come to committee and then go to council pending approval of the budget. So we will not award the contract or sign any contract language until July 1st or after. Yeah, it did, I just failed to mention it.
I just wanted to ask about that.
Thank you.
You said it's a total of 14 parking spots?
Yes, I believe it's. Did I get that right?
Yes, but it also adds, this is, so when the park. ADA access from Richmond Avenue. And what this is going to do is actually add sidewalk ADA access along Richmond, improving that parking area and that, that's currently there, that's now dirt, and there's just gravel access. We did provide sidewalk that comes around from the ball field to the backside to provide some ADA access that way, but it is certainly a roundabout. And as you may know, the park has been, it has been actually fantastic. I was actually surprised at the number of citizens that go to there on a daily basis, and it has been packed. Parking is all the way down in front of the ball field down the road on some days, and this is much needed on Richmond Avenue. But there's a ditch there, so we're having to cover the ditch up and make for drainage appropriations there, then the 14 spaces, and again, sidewalk and ADA access.
Feel a lot better. Thought we were paying 18,000 per parking spot for a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions, y'all? Can this be done with no objection? All right, and I see no objection, this will also be approved. We'll move on to number 17, contract award to Blythe Construction Inc. for year eight's resurfacing project. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson, second?
I'll second it.
All right, second in. Still all you, Jared.
That's right. So this is our big yearly resurfacing, so CTC, like I said before, CTC really focuses in on pavement preservation and resurfacing, and then our tag funds we focus on primarily on dirt road paving. So this is their yearly bid. They put it out, they'd received two bids, and the parent lowest bidder was Blythe Construction. So we have two major asphalt contractors, and both of them, both of them bid on it, so it's what we'd like to see. We have two, the county and CTC has two pavement management guides that are, are reports that they've used. Effin and me did one back in February of '22, which is for our county payment evaluation. And then AMT, another engineer, helped us and did one back in October '22, and more recently, updated in February on county, or DOT roads within the county. So CTC has a requirement where they got to spend at least 33% on DOT-owned roadways, and then the remainder, they can spend on public-owned roadways, county-owned roadways. So this project has a portion of DOT spend and a portion of county roads totaling. The bid is 4.7 million, and we added a 10% contingency, which is typical on this project, for a 475 million, 476 million, for a total value of that 5.2 million. And this is within the CTC account, and they have 6.3 million, 6.4 million available.
All right, any questions?
I have another question, please. I'm looking at the bid totals. There's such a discrepancy on mobilization, is that because Blythe Construction, is that much closer than APAC?
No, that's just where the contractors put different funds. So there's a couple of funds where you see, the line items are usually fairly close as far as the, the normal paving and striping and different things. The contractors carry their overhead and, and fees and profit in different line items, and a lot of times, you see it at mobilization.
Yeah, and it's also in traffic control, look at the, it's almost twice as much.
Yes. But all in all, the, the, yeah, they come out similar, and again, they're both reputable firms, and, and they're within historical amounts.
All right, can this be done with no objection? And I see no objection, this will also be approved. Moving on to Stormwater and Public Works, number 18, contract award to Becker Complete LLC for compactor maintenance and repairs. Can I have a motion to put this on?
So moved.
And a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Jared?
All right, so over the last year or so, we've transitioned from renting the compactors at our, at our major centers to owning them, so we bought those compactors. And we've got four major centers, and we've bought 20, so we have five at each center available. And so what this contract is, or this proposal, RFP, is to upkeep and extend the service life of those. We decided to put this out to get professional maintenance and repair services, so it includes preventative maintenance, emergency servicing, oil change, and general repairs. We only received one bidder on this, but looking through what they offered and what we know we paid in past, over this past year, we feel like it was a responsive and capable bid. So the annual cost is 107,000. This is a three-year contract, but with two one-year renewals, so with the, add up the five years of, of opportunity of contract value, that's the 536,000 that you see at the top. The budget code for this, we didn't update this in time enough, but remember, solid waste is coming from enterprise fund back into general fund. So the budget code is actually, instead of 5,000, it's 1,000 dash 30 dash 1340, the rest of it's the same, 1340, 51, 160. So just making sure it's in the right. This is. This is budgeted in similar as the last one, in next year's fiscal year budget. So, this too will not be signed and contract moved forward until July 1st pending budget approval, third reading.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the life expectancy of a compactor?
Bradley better answer that.
Now, I think the life expectancy on the ones that we just replaced, for instance, like at Shankland, those units were 14, since that unit was built, so 13, 14 years ago, whenever that was redone, so there, we've gotten every bit of life out of, we can get out of the ones we had before. I mean, they were down until we were starting up, you know, a lot of failures, so they're 13, 14, 15 years. But I think with this maintenance plan, probably get 20 years out of them.
Okay, thanks.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry.
While we're talking about the solid waste and recycling of the compactors, I, I'd ask our administration to take a look at this situation. The convenience centers are in the rural area. We have the compactors, then we have the, the housing for the attendants where they can get in and out of the inclement weather. At our main station in Shankland, those employees are out in the weather, in inclement weather, from the time they clock on till they clock off. I, I would ask us to look at trying to devise some type of shelter to give them, give them the opportunity to get out of the inclement weather, whether it be the heat of the summer or the cold of the winter, or even rain. Okay, so let's look at that and see if we can, we can do something there.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We'll do, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so my question, it looks like we only got one responsive bid. I'm sure, I'm sure they're great and seem qualified, but do we feel comfortable doing the three-year contract on, with that?
Yeah, they're currently doing, they do, I think, they're currently doing a lot in Richland County, they're from Columbia, the main company, they do a lot for Charleston, Richland, there's several counties. So, we vetted all those, solid waste department did, and vetted those companies, made sure they were good. They give us a 24-hour response time on any emergencies, they'll shoot it within 24 hours. We did several interviews through ourselves and include procurement on that, on that interview process as well. So, we vetted them fairly well.
Sounds good, thank you. Can this be approved with no objection? Alrighty, this will move on as well with no objection.
Looking, want me to take it back in?
Yes, sir.
All right, I believe now we're on number 19, an ordinance amending Chapter 99 Stormwater Management, Article 2, Stormwater Management Utility Section 101 Findings of Fact, 106 Definitions, and 109 Exemptions of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. Fiscal impact, the fiscal impact on the county is that they would not receive stormwater fees from the US government. May I have a motion to open this up?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, Tab with the motion, and Alice with the second. All right, and I believe, does, want to open this up discussion now?
I'll kick it off and then give it to Brian, or Brian, you want to start it? I'll, I'll just kick it off, and then Brian's got all the details. So, a couple of years back, if you recall this, because this has come up before as far as stormwater fees, and specifically on our federal installations. And we were in litigation at one point pursuing those fees. In March of '22, we had a letter written from the mayors of Port Royal and Beaufort as their installations, air stations in Beaufort and Paris Island and Port Royal, their councils voted to cease billing the military installations for those stormwater fees. So, at that point, we sent a letter and notice to the installations that we are going to stop with the litigation, and we've, we let go of the retained attorney for that. What we didn't do was the one step necessary later for us to codify that, which was to come back and amend our ordinance that dictates where the stormwater fees are generated from. So, that's what this is, is an attempt to continue what we, what we didn't finish the last time when we talked through this, and to update the ordinance to make that provision. And what it does, first, it credits, we have outstanding balance with the federal installations, so it credits that and makes that zero, and then moving forward, it will not be billed as such. So, that's what this is about, and Brian can give you more T-Dell, and also Dave Trail with the air station is here, and he's been integral in these discussions as well.
Sounds good. Brian, you want to come up and explain this a little bit more?
Yeah, I think Jared did a pretty good job explaining that. Back in February of 2022, this issue came to the Natural Resources Committee, and the committee voted to do away with billing the air station, the depot, and the hospital. At that time, it went to council in March, and council followed through and voted to do away with that, but then it ended there, as Jared said. So, no action was taken to remove it from the ordinance, and so, the auditor has continued to put that bill on the duplicates and mail those to the air station, the depot, the hospital, Pinckney Island, and Ace Basin. And this action here today will amend the ordinance, and it will allow the auditor to not bill them anymore. And it will also take the step to give them a credit for any amounts that we billed in the past, any penalties that have accrued for non-payment of those bills, or any costs assessed by the treasurer because of delinquency of those accounts. So, we will recognize that either in the case of the Ace Basin or Pinckney Island, that they have no impervious surfaces, it's all pervious there, so there's no reason to bill them for stormwater management because they don't participate in our stormwater management. So, we'll give them a credit for any buildings in the past, and then for the three military installations, we'll give them a credit because they have self-sufficient stormwater management, and they spend their money to manage their own stormwater in there for the most part. So, there's very little interaction with our county stormwater management system. So, we will recognize their expenditures and their costs that they've put forth for managing their stormwater to give them that credit. And this should wrap it up to where the auditor won't bill them anymore in the future, and will not feel that they're delinquent any longer because we've given them credit for any buildings. Okay, any questions beyond that? I do ask that you make an amendment to the ordinance before you, this is at the request of council from the air station, and this will make it just a little bit cleaner and easier to where they understand that if they qualify for the exemption that we give them in the ordinance, then they're good to go.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend Section 99, 109, Paragraph B, 10, to read as follows. Federally owned lands which qualify for an exemption pursuant to Paragraph 8 are acknowledged as having a self-sufficient federal stormwater management system, or having little or no impervious surfaces, and shall therefore receive 100% credit for any previous fees, penalties, or cost of collection assessed prior to August 1st, 2025.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is Paris Island included in that? I hear Paris Island mentioned.
Yes, it's the air station, Paris Island, the naval hospital, Pinckney Island, and Ace Basin.
Laurel Bay.
And the Laurel Bay.
Laurel Bay's part with the air station.
Right.
Part with the air station.
You said, you said Pinckney Island?
Yes. We have letters from the Department of Justice and Department of Interior where they challenged our ability to charge them for stormwater fees there as well, and we're just recognizing that, that we don't want to get in litigation with Department of Justice or Department of Interior for the fees that we're talking about. And again, there's no pervious surfaces there, so...
I didn't realize, okay, thank you.
Brian, well, Mr. Trail, I see you're here, would you like to add anything to that from the Marine Corps side?
No, I'd just like to say thank you all for considering this, it's been a long time, and I'm just looking forward to getting this...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Trail and Mr. Bartholomew, you brought this to light again to us to get this resolved. So, I didn't know anything about it, so I'm glad you brought it to light.
That's a good point, because the chair and the vice chair, the administrator, myself, and Jared, met with Mr. Trail and Mr. Jim Landis from the Recruit Depot and the Air Station to resolve this, and they've been very cooperative and very helpful in trying to resolve this situation.
The credits that were listed, is, where's the funding coming for those credits that we're going to have to pay back? Because I'm assuming that the money's already been spent.
There's been, they've never paid it.
Okay.
So, it's just been out there, delinquent, that's why you had the delinquent fees and costs, and so, it's just a wash.
Okay, perfect.
So, there's no fiscal impact to the county, other than no collection in the future.
Is there any further discussion or questions regarding this matter? Seeing none, can this move forward without objection?
We have to do two.
Second?
Because there was an amendment, you have to...
Oh, sorry.
The amendment first, and then the other one.
Yeah, let's handle the amendment. Can the amendment, can it be amended without objection?
Yes.
All right, seeing no objection, the ordinance is amended. Now, moving forward to the actual original motion, is there any further discussion on that?
As amended.
Yeah, as amended. All right, seeing none, can that move forward as amended without objection? All right, seeing none, it will be, be moving forward to county council, thank you.
And we'll give you a clean copy at the first reading.
Sounds good, thank you so much. All right, moving on to item 20, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a drainage easement located at 15 Suzanne Avenue in Pawkey Island in Beaufort County, South Carolina, there is no fiscal impact. May I have a motion to open this up for discussion? All right, Mr. Dawson with the motion, may I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Alice with the second, and it's all yours, Mr. Elliott?
Uh, it's amazing, Jared, give you a little water break here, that was a long stint. Yeah, this is just an acceptance of a drainage easement on Pawkey Island, just, for whatever reason, the county didn't have an easement there prior to. So, basically, all the roadside ditches drain to this area and then outfall, so we're just asking for that so we can maintain that easement, that's all. And the citizens already granted the easement to us.
And where is this?
Pawkey Island, out near, kind of north of the air station, Graves Hill area.
All right, any questions or comments regarding this item?
None whatsoever.
All right.
Just want to say that any, any relief we can get out in the rural areas for drainage, I'm all for it.
I agree, all right, can this move forward without objection? All right, seeing no objection, it will be moving forward. Jumping into airports here, item 21, which is a contract award to Elite Parking Services of America, DBA Autonomous Transit LLC for parking management services at Hilton Head Island Airport. The fiscal impact here is a total projected revenue after management, equipment, and operating expenses of 3.32 million over five years. Let's see here. I guess GL 540090000051160, maintenance balance of $34,380 for one-time $25,000 fee. And may I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, so moved, can I get a second?
Seconded.
All right, and John, it's all you.
Thank you very much. A little background on this, the airport has had the same parking contractor for quite a long time, and as their term was coming to an end, we bid out that opportunity and got a few responses, which was good. It actually coincided pretty well with the terminal project as well, so it was a good time to, to get that out there and see what else was available. So, we did receive several different proposal packages, and we had a team that reviewed those. And the goal in reviewing those packages was really to come up with the best value to the airport, because this is a revenue-producing operation where the contractor makes revenue, makes money, but the airport should as well. And so, we're seeking to kind of optimize that for the airport as we move forward, and with the projects out there, just improve the overall quality of the campus. So, that was a goal. Elite Parking came to us with a good proposal, and they will do, it's an 80-20 split of revenue, 80 being to the airport, 20 to Elite. We do pay a one-time fee of the 25,000, that's basically a membership into their proprietary software system that manages that parking. They do have the capability of, of remote management and a lot of maintenance remotely as well, so it's kind of nice there. And they're a larger, more responsive group, so we're looking forward to, to doing business with them. But again, this did, bless you, this did create the, the best value opportunity out of the applicants for the airport, so that's why we bring it forward to you for consideration.
What's our current breakdown?
Current breakdown is, there's a threshold of revenue that the parking company has to achieve before the airport receives any revenue. So, it's not the optimum way to move forward, so this will be completely different for us. The other advantage to Elite is they bring flexibility to install a similar system on the general aviation side, which completely is, or currently is, is not regulated as far as parking goes. And it's fairly widely known on the island that if you need to, to park a car somewhere for free for a little while, and if you can find a spot there, then you should do that. So, we feel we should generate some revenue on that side as well, and Elite's going to give us that opportunity.
Are there any other questions? Can this be approved with no objection? All right, number 21 is approved with no objection.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, a change order to Mitchell Brothers Incorporated Contract for Construction Renovation of the Administrative Building and County Council Chambers. Can I get a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson?
Mr. Dawson with the second.
Yeah, good afternoon, I think it's, yeah, afternoon. So, there is a change in the fiscal impact. The fiscal impact listed on the agenda is $249,065. That has changed to $258,965, and I'd like to explain why. So, the project that this pertains to is the admin renovation, admin building renovation to include council chambers. And we brought this forward, one of the three components that Robert is going to describe to you as part of this change order was making the dais handicap accessible. We could not get the actual bid in hand until late last week, we're trying to condense this and do things concurrently. We put a placeholder dollar amount, thinking that we had it covered, and it came in slightly higher on Friday, so when we're here today, we're amending that total fiscal impact for this change order to account for that dollar amount. If we had not done that, it would have forced a delay in the project, which we don't want. We want to get y'all back in council chambers as quickly as possible. So, I just wanted to point that out, that's how it came about, and now I'm going to turn it over to Robert and let him give you the nuts and bolts of what the change order is, thank you.
Thank you, there's a couple of components to this change order, you can see there's three different items that we're addressing, one being the HVAC system, which is the most prevalent there. It was actually, the HVAC system was switched out, a new one was installed several years ago, there were deficiencies still noted in the council chambers, I'm sure, as all of you can attest to, everything from humidity issues. So, facilities had actually a project slated for next year that was going to address some of the issues, but when we got into construction, we actually noted that there were much more significant issues than what they were there to take care of. So, basically, all of the old duct board, it's not actually rigid flex duct or anything like that, it's actually just a flimsy duct board that it was constructed out of. And in order to complete that renovation, basically, the entire ceiling grid has to come down, and you have to replace all of that with new rigid ducting or flex duct. So, this would have created not only a delay, we felt like it was financially responsible to bring it to you this time because it would have had less impact, but again, it would not cause any significant delays down the road to get that remedied. That was the most impactful, like I said, change order number two is basically incorporating the hallway, to finish off the hallway, we're, at the lobby, we are stopping there currently, we felt like that there was going to be a mismatch, if you want to say, of flooring. New paint, we felt like that it would be something to bring before you that would complete basically the entire first floor if we do that. That's basically going to be flooring, paint, ceiling, and new lighting. And lastly was, as Chuck mentioned, the ADA access to the dais, there were some design changes that delayed us getting those numbers to you, and that came in at 44,000. And again, total, total fiscal impact to this, Project 25896560, bringing the total project cost to 1.302 million. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Behind where we sit, there is that little fun wall back there, what was the original intent of putting that space, other than putting county council members that don't behave behind the wall?
So, originally, the curved wall, there was, there was, there was actually, there used to be electronics, there was actually a television that was back in the left corner at one time, the other was just a storage closet, and it was just meant to conform to the curve of the dais at the time. So, now, we're going to be expanding that, the walls will be pushed back, basically. walls will be pushed back, basically. There'll be ADA access. At one point, we had discussed ADA access, and this was the design change from the outside. We've, it went to the, we've gone through several administrators with this as well, but we, we also determined that, okay, if it's raining outside, and someone has to come down from the dais, and they've got to go outside to come inside, basically. It didn't make much sense at the time. That was one of the first designs that we had. So this, this design brings ADA access through the interior of the building and the office that is adjacent to the council chambers.
And are there windows behind there?
Yes, there are.
Will those be?
Blacked out.
I don't want to sit with my bag to a window.
Nope, all of the windows will be blacked out. It'll, it'll all be solid wall behind you.
Not that I'm suspicious.
No, it's okay.
I prefer that, yeah. I poked my head in over, before I came in here, over there. Wow. What a difference, huh? I didn't realize we had that much space.
It's already making a huge difference, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Can this be approved with no objection? All right, number 22 is approved with no objection. That will move on to county council, correct?
Yes, that will.
Thank you. On to number 23, change order to Wood and Partners Incorporated for Buckwalter Recreation Athletic Complex Expansion, amended scope, fiscal impact. Looks to be 91,520. That's with the contingency. Do we have a motion to put this on the floor?
Our motion.
Ms. Brown, a second, please?
My second.
All right, thank you. Ms. Howard?
Yes, sir.
So this relates back to the change orders that came through that you ratified not too long ago. Basically, this was all work that had been found after Wood and Partners had started their assessment of the property. They found that there were non-jurisdictional wetlands that were on the property, that were not noted in the original surveys. Either they were there afterwards, or just, again, just not noted in the original, because it did not have an impact. So those had to be addressed. We have, we have to mitigate those. This was part of that. We also had some issues with Beaufort Jasper Water and some regulation changes that they basically now push off on the engineers. We also had an issue with, with DNR. So when they review, they also found this was, I don't know if you've been, the hog nose, snake issue, basically, if this has come before us again. Basically, they found that the habitat was favorable for endangered species, one being the hog nose snake, and another type of bat. So all of this had to be basically negotiated and remedied, and this was a change order that had come through to us. We could not push this through, because we did not have an open PO. It had to be ratified. We were able to get the PO reopened, and now this change order is coming before you. This has been completed. We are through with permitting. We have gone through the final stages of permitting. This has gone to the town of Bluffton. We are ready to put this out for bid.
Any questions? Can this be approved with no objection? All right, that is, number 23 is also approved with no objection. Unless there is anything else for this body, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.